To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, Commissioner Reese, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and as we were called for, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on August 28, 2024. Mr. Feinstein, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Greavy.
Present.
Commissioner Matthews.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Werblin is absent, and Chairperson Kennedy.
Present. All right, information on providing public comments. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the Commission and may be referred to staff. Comments will be accepted in person or via Zoom, and for public comment instructions to speak on an agenda item in person, please complete a speaker's card and give it to the secretary before the meeting or at the latest, prior to the time for public comments on that item. When joining Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone to request to speak. You will be called on by name, and we'll have three minutes to speak. Now we'll go on to item four, the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda from August 14.
Thank you, is there a second?
I do second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on August 14. Are there any changes to the minutes of August 14, 2024?
And there are none, excuse me, none from staff.
None from commission? Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Show move.
Thank you, a second?
All second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, now for public comments, item six. This is the time for the public to speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. I will now open the public comment period. I have no cards and no hands raised. I will now close the public comment period. Scheduled matters, item number seven. The next item on the agenda is scheduled matters. For each agendized item, there'll be a presentation by city staff. For items that involve application requests, I will ask the applicant to address the Commission if they so desire. Then I will open the comment period via Zoom and in-house. I will close the comment period after all comments have been provided and after all our questions regarding the testimony during the comment period have been answered. After that comment period is closed, the Commission will deliberate on the item and may have additional questions for staff. We cannot take any additional testimony or questions from the public after the comment period is closed. So, item A, study session, mixed-use zoning regulations. This is a continued study session on mixed-use regulations for commercial zoning districts. Our presenter tonight is Jonathan Atkinson. Jonathan, how you doing tonight?
Pretty good, how about yourself?
Good, thanks.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. Tonight I will facilitate a follow-up discussion related to the city's mixed-use development regulations. I will provide a recap of the April 10, 2024, study session and then move on to the remaining items that were not addressed. The Commission asks staff to return with recommendations on potential regulations. I will ask the Commission for direction after the presentation, but would be more than happy to answer questions throughout the presentation. On April 10, 2024, staff sought guidance from the Commission as to whether, A, regulations should require commercial development on each separate legal parcel within an integrated center that also includes housing, or B, regulations may allow one or more legal parcels in an integrated center to be developed solely with residential uses. The Commission determined that each separate legal parcel in an integrated center should include commercial development when housing is proposed. On May 1, oops, sorry about that. On May 1, the Commission provided further guidance on mixed-use development during a study session for the general plan update. The Commission clarified that unless an integrated center is designed as a master plan project upfront with residential uses, all parcels in a mixed-use development must contain commercial uses. Staff crafted a recommendation for Commission discussion based on this direction. At the April 10 study session, staff also sought guidance from the Commission regarding minimum commercial thresholds. Staff asked the following questions of the Commission. Is the 50% of "frontage," in quotes, or some other percentage appropriate? Two, if not, should there be a minimum percentage of ground floor square footage such as 25% or regardless of whether the building faces an arterial roadway? For example, if it is to the rear or faces a smaller street or is internal to an integrated center. The Commission did not provide guidance on minimum commercial thresholds during that study session. The Commission did express support for residential development within commercial zoning districts in general. Furthermore, the Commission was very clear that they want a substantial amount of commercial space in a mixed-use project. They also liked the idea of there being a commercial component on the ground floor of a mixed-use project. The Commission directed staff to return at a future date with examples of minimum commercial thresholds from other cities for the sake of comparison. Staff looked at the cities of Benicia, Vallejo, Sassoon City, Vacaville, and Davis. We found that some of the cities only permit residential uses within a commercial zoning district either behind or above the ground floor. One city requires 15% of the ground floor area and 20% to 40% of the building frontage to be commercial. And lastly, one of the cities we looked at allows the review authority, so that could be the Planning Commission, that could be zoning administrator or staff, to determine specific aspects of a mixed-use development, like minimum commercial space, through the use permit process. The various regulations that I've noted do demonstrate that cities regulate land use based on their respective development needs and on long-range planning goals. Finding the right balance for what works in Fairfield will be key to the discussion tonight. The following aspects will be discussed as we identify some potential new regulations. Building frontage. Should a certain percentage of the building frontage retain commercial character, particularly on the ground floor? Square footage. Should some percentage of the overall footage, square footage, be retained for commercial space? Street orientation. Should minimum commercial requirements apply to buildings that just face the street or for all buildings regardless of street orientation? This slide depicts the approved Brio Studios mixed-use project on North Texas Street, just for example of some of these elements that I discussed or mentioned. Staff recommends the following minimum commercial thresholds for integrated centers. Unless designed as a master planned project that includes residential uses, all parcels in a mixed-use development project must contain commercial uses. This recommendation is consistent with Commission direction from the April 10 and May 1 study sessions. In master planned projects with some buildings entirely residential, what restrictions should be placed on the amount of residential development? Staff thinks that an appropriate balance is necessary to ensure that projects within commercial zoning districts maintain a balance of residential and commercial, so we recommend that at least 50% of the commercial ground floor space be commercial when it's a master planned development, and I'm happy to flesh that out a little more here. This minimum percentage does not have to be 50%. The Commission could select a smaller or larger percentage. This slide depicts the Green Valley Office Park site applying the minimum commercial threshold for an integrated center if it were master planned. So this office park was clearly not master planned, but just for the sake of this example, if a developer came in and said, hey, we're laying out, these are our plans for every single parcel in this site. We want to do office, we want to do a library, we want to do a preschool. We want to do office, we want to do a library, we want to do a preschool. They could actually allocate one parcel to be all residential under the recommendation that I just noted for you. Staff recommends the following minimum commercial threshold for standalone parcels or individual parcels that are in a non-master planned center. For buildings that face an arterial road, 100% of the ground floor facade that faces the arterial road and 20% of the floor area for the ground floor shall be designed for commercial occupancy independent of the residential use. The Sunrise Mixed Use Project at 2750 North Texas Street, that's at the corner of North Texas and Cement Hill Road, across from the Walgreens, across from Walmart as well, is a good example of a project that provides 100% commercial street frontage along an arterial road. Staff recommends 20% of the ground floor area be designed for commercial occupancy to ensure that there is a substantive amount of commercial space. Staff also recommends the following commercial threshold for non-arterial roads. For any other buildings on a mixed-use parcel, a minimum of 10% of the ground floor area shall be designed for commercial occupancy independent of the residential use. The required 10% of commercial floor area per building may be combined and located in any building on the parcel. As noted, 10% of the ground floor area for each building would be designed for commercial occupancy. We recommend allowing projects to combine this 10% minimum so that some buildings can have more residential or more commercial space based on the project. These are situations where buildings are located throughout a site versus like a single building on a mixed-use parcel. This would allow for flexibility and ensures that a meaningful amount of commercial space is provided. The Commission could select a smaller or a larger percentage for both recommendations. This slide depicts the Sunrise Mixed Use Project site applying the minimum commercial threshold for, of 100% building frontage and 20% for the ground floor area. It also shows 10% of commercial space for other buildings throughout the site. So just to walk you through here, you'll see that there's building frontage along North Texas Street. So under the standard that I just laid out to you, 100% of the building frontage for this project on North Texas would have to be commercial space. As far as Cement Hill Road goes, Cement Hill may be an arterial road, so let's just use that for example. The buildings that face Cement Hill Road, under this standard that I just laid out for you, 100% of that building frontage would also have to be residential. And you'll notice there's some rectangles throughout other portions of this site. So under this standard, given that there's multiple buildings on this project site, 10% of those individual buildings would also need to have a commercial component. So we welcome feedback from the Commission on these various aspects of these proposed recommendations. And this slide depicts the Aurora Project site, applying the minimum commercial threshold of 10% per building. So this project site is in the Green Valley Office Park. It's not on an arterial road, so that's where the 10% commercial threshold would apply based on the recommendation we're making. Staff heard from the Commissioned that there's a preference for an active vibrant commercial frontage for mixed-use projects. Building transparency is one way to achieve this with windows and storefront doors comprising a certain percentage of the building frontage. Staff has crafted the following recommendation for the Commission's consideration. For buildings that face a public street, the street-facing ground floor shall have a minimum transparency of 60% for the thoroughfare district, community commercial district, and neighborhood commercial district, and 30% for the office commercial district. And essentially, those are the districts that are affected by the mixed-use standards. The Commission may wish to adjust these percentages or not to adopt minimum transparency requirements for any mixed-use project in a commercial zone. This slide depicts a 60% building transparency requirement, and this exhibit was pulled from the Vallejo Municipal Code just to demonstrate what 60% would look like for a building. Staff recommends that the Commission provide feedback on the proposed minimum commercial thresholds. The study session would serve as a precursor to future zoning ordinance amendments that would go before the Commission as an advisory body and then to the City Council for final consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the Commission. Thank you.
And before we take questions, what staff would like to do is take questions, have you take any public comments? And then Jonathan will go back through that presentation, each of those recommendations, and spend some time with the Commission, one by one. I think there's four separate, four separate questions for you to discuss and provide any direction. So we'll go back to those, we went through them somewhat quickly, but we'll spend time with each of those four.
All right, great. Now it's time for any additional questions for staff. As Mr. Feinstein articulated, after the questions, we'll go to public comment, and afterwards, staff will lead us through another set of questions, four questions to get us to the Commission's direction. We'll start down with Commissioner Singh. Do you have any questions?
Yes, actually, no questions.
Okay.
I have questions, but I think it'll be better when he's going through the slides again. Thank you.
Yeah, I do have a question on the transparency, minimum transparency requirement. And like you explained, for the buildings that face public street, the street-facing ground floor shall be, shall have minimum transparency of 60% for the thoroughfare commercial. I'll say in abbreviation, C for CTCC, CN, but you said 30% for CO for that office commercial. Why there two different sets? What's the logic and reasoning behind it? 30% for office commercial and 60% for the rest of the commercial units?
We recommended a distinction between office commercial, which the uses in that zone are primarily office, versus the other commercial districts that we identified, which could allow for a variety of commercial establishments, like retail, for example. The basis was that for an office building, you may not need as much transparency to kind of create like that interface between the street and the building and that a greater transparency is needed for, you know, buildings that have retail, maybe restaurants. So that was the basis, but you know, as I noted, these are just percentages that we've recommended. The Commission could, you know, either increase them or decrease or not adopt at all.
And I'll add that transparency helps create a sense of vibrancy and a sense of activity in the centers. Typically, office developments, it's not quite as important to see that vibrancy as it is in a more retail environment. But as Jonathan mentioned, if the Commission feels you want to see more transparency in office areas, you can certainly make that recommendation.
May I ask a follow-up question? Could you provide a couple of, like, examples of the differences between the first three, like around the community? If you could just...
Yeah, so the first one is thoroughfare commercial. So for that zoning district, think most of North Texas. It's a very linear street and a lot of North Texas is thoroughfare commercial. I don't know if folks are familiar with Parker Road, way out on the east side of town. But a lot of the commercial on Parker Road is actually thoroughfare commercial as well. As far as community commercial goes, think like Wood Creek, Fairfield Corners, 1500 Oliver Road, where like Mary's Pizza Shack is located. There's a gym over there. I think there's Favelas over there. So just like neighborhood shopping centers that, you know, may have, you know, an anchor or two. And then for neighborhood commercial, kind of probably the best example that comes to mind, if you're familiar with Pennsylvania, you know where the 7-Eleven is. If you're going northbound on Pennsylvania, that is neighborhood commercial. There's some neighborhood commercial along East Tabor going eastward. Basically, you might see like a convenience market, but surrounded by mostly residential.
Thank you.
To follow up with that, just to get a couple more definitions. On the attachment two, you've got these, what is, okay, CO is office. What is CS and CR?
CS is service commercial. So those are areas that I like to describe as a kind of a hybrid of like heavy commercial and light industrial. So if you're familiar with the industrial parks off of Claybank and Horizon Drive, you think of Heretic, for example, that whole area is service commercial. Okay, so you, we actually don't allow residential uses in the CS zone because they are like kind of semi-industrial. So that's why you don't see CS noted here. And regional commercial are commercial zoning districts that are largely along Interstate 80. They cater to a market beyond Fairfield and Sassoon. So think of like the Solano Town Center property or the Gateway Shopping Center along Gateway off of 80. That's CR, that's regional commercial.
Yeah, so essentially, if you look at our zoning ordinance, right now residential is not permitted in either of those two zoning districts. They're, you know, one's reserved for more retail and sales tax generating uses and the other's reserved for the more impactful kinds of heavy commercial uses that you just don't want residences around. So we looked at the remaining commercial districts for these regulations.
Back to questions from...
So, a couple of questions. Could you go to the slide where it's where the Aurora development is? The other one, the overview? Yeah. So there, I am wondering whether we would have a problem because you have different ownerships of different properties and if you attribute to the overall, you know, 10% or whatever percentage, but then you have a change in ownership or you have a change in tenancy in one of those. I see that as being problematic. Have you thought through that issue?
We did. So one thing to note is if it's a center like, maybe Green Valley Office Park wasn't the best example because it's already been built over time, so it wasn't quite master planned. So in the case of this particular office park, if someone wanted to propose a mixed-use project, again, under the standards that we are recommending, they would have to include a commercial component. If this particular site was completely a blank slate and you had either a single owner or you had a collection of owners that were submitting like a master planned development application where they're laying out everything as part of the proposal, then you could have an all-residential parcel. And there, I think the assumption is that a group of owners or a single owner submitting an application for a master planned development, there'd be, we would assume they'd be on the same page if they're submitting an application for a master planned development. And if it's a single owner, then it's easier because they have full control.
Yes, but in the case of what just happened, we had the issue with, we sort of ended up getting comfortable with the fact that there's enough retail around there to justify mixed use. But it was really a solely 100% residential submission.
You may, sorry to cut in.
Go ahead.
You may recall that that project is kind of what sparked this whole mixed-use discussion. So under, so, okay, let's, this is clearly not master planned. So let's say that the Commission is favorable to the commercial thresholds that we're recommending and Council adopts them and they become part of the zoning ordinance. A project on this parcel would need to provide commercial space that was basically noted for non-arterial. So basically, it's a 10% per building threshold. So 10% of every one of those buildings as part of the Aurora project would have to include commercial. That's what we're recommending. It doesn't necessarily need to be 10%.
Go ahead and bring that slide back up that shows what that might look like.
I have a problem with that. I don't think that's practical.
I agree.
So that, that I see as being, you're forcing a developer to put something in the bowels of development that's not going to be successful. So this, doing it by each building within there, I see as being problematic. But I want to, before we get too deep on this, Mr. Feinstein, I recall when this came up, part of the issue was they made an application for a mixed use and there was a timing issue with our administrative response. Does that ring a bell? That, to object to it, we had to do it within 30 days? And that the process took longer than 30 days? Can you just remind us all of that issue?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I'll answer that question. I think Jonathan, though, will have a response to the, staff did think about the potential impracticality of putting commercial in each of these buildings. So when I'm done, he'll be able to address that as well.
I'm sorry, just couldn't hear. You said did, the staff did?
Staff did consider that exact issue. We put this together, and I realize I'm not yet answering the second question that you asked. We put this together at the direction, based on the direction from the Commission that you wanted to see commercial in every building. That was the direction that we heard at the last meeting. So we put this with that 10% threshold. But Jonathan will talk about that, some of the additional consideration that we put in on that. Getting back to your other question, on the Aurora project, state law under Senate Bill 330, and I may, I may misquote this, but this is the gist, directs that the city make a determination within a certain time period, and I think it was 30 days from the time we find the application complete, as to whether or not it met the city's standards. Is it compliant with our basic zoning standards? And so because we have to make that within 30 days of them submitting a complete application, that's before the issue comes before the Planning Commission and therefore essentially state law says, even if the city wanted the Planning Commission to make that call, because it has to happen so quickly, essentially, it's city staff that makes the call. Does this project meet the requirements of the city's zoning ordinance?
Okay.
Normally, we would prefer that final call to be made by the Planning Commission, but because state law is written the way it is...
Yeah, and in this case, there was no, there were no specifics, hence the reason why we're having this.
Correct. The whole reason we're having this discussion is that the code basically says that you have to have some commercial in this project. It doesn't say in each building, but it does say in this project. But there's no thresholds, there's no guidance, there's no direction at all. And so that's why we're having these study sessions to get your input on what regulations and direction should there be for mixing residential and commercial. And so with, does that answer that question?
Yes, that answers that question. And maybe this is too premature, but I, I just am concerned about having hard and fast percentages, but at the same time, I don't want to have a repeat of what we went through here because every project's going to be unique. And I think we need to trust in the staff administration capability to say, yeah, this makes sense, as opposed to forcing, you know, 5,000 square feet or whatever it may be, that has to be retail or commercial in an area where it's destined for failure.
Yeah, and just, and just for some context... And just for some context, uh, with this project, what, what they actually proposed was about 150 square feet of a coffee kiosk in the clubhouse building in the back. Um, with the regulation that was proposed by staff, that, that 10% of the, of the ground floor area in each of these buildings be commercial. The three main buildings are about 8,000 square feet on the first floor and the clubhouse is about 3,500 square feet. So you're looking at, I don't know, about 28,000 square feet, I think, or no, 25-ish thousand square feet of, uh, total floor area on that first floor. So with this suggestion by staff for you to consider, they would have had to have put in about 2,500 square feet of commercial rather than 150. And so as we were thinking about that math, that 10%, you know, where it's, we knew 150 is, you know, the commission definitely responded negatively to that. So you start to say, okay, well, you know, how much do you keep adding before you, you hit a number that's appropriate? And we thought 10% would be a good starting point. Jonathan, um, if you would, uh, highlight again, the, the considerations that maybe it's not practical to have each of these buildings with 10%. Um, and, and again, we, we, we did it this way as a starting point because of the direction from the commission that you said you wanted to see commercial in, in each building. But the, uh, the flexibility consideration, why don't you talk about that?
Yeah. So we, um, you know, as Dave noted, we, we definitely acknowledge that it may not be practical and a project like this for every single building to have commercial. So we do allow, under this recommendation, flexibility to combine those percentages to a single building. And it might make sense, in this particular case, let's just say for example, building two had all the commercial. That, that might make more sense than commercial being dispersed throughout a garden-style development.
Yeah. So with, with the staff, as we wrote it in your staff report and as Jonathan presented, the, the math would be based on the square footage of each of the buildings, but there would be the flexibility to put that 2,500 square feet of commercial in one building or divide it into two buildings. Essentially, the developer's choice how they wish to do it, but at least there's some math that tells them, here's what you have to achieve. 150 square feet isn't enough. But again, you know, it's for the commission to, you know, you can weigh and debate and discuss what, what might be appropriate.
Any questions here? Commissioner Warble?
Just confirming, this is question time, correct?
Question time, yep. And then we'll, we'll go back and we'll walk through and we'll, we'll let you guys discuss amongst yourselves.
My first question is, I just want to confirm that currently we do not have a transparency minimum requirement.
For mixed use projects in our commercial zoning districts, no. The only transparency requirements we have are for the heart of Fairfield Plan zoning districts.
And then my second question is, in the, in the staff report, we looked at, we, I'm including myself, um, we looked at Davis, Vacaville, et cetera. Um, did we, we, was there a reason why we didn't look at, um, areas in Contra Costa or East Bay, like Livermore or Fremont? I remember having that discussion, some of the areas that, um, maybe have a different, uh, makeup of Fairfield, but that we can glean ideas from.
Yeah. I mean, I, I contemplated looking at cities as far as San Luis Obispo, but it, I mean, ultimately, we decided that the cities that are within the immediate area offer a good diversity of cities where, you know, you have some smaller cities like Benicia and Sassoon. You have comparable cities like Vacaville and Vallejo. We figured that let's, we had enough examples, I think, with those cities and the Davis as well.
Yeah. And we added Davis as, as a city that might be, you know, more retail focused, more vibrancy, you know, typically in their downtown. So we, we felt that was a good enough mix, but, you know, if the commission wants us to look farther, we can certainly do that.
Ultimately, what we, what we found, and I, I mentioned this earlier, these five cities were so different from each other. I mean, some of them were, had some consistency, but it, it shows that, you know, each city, they will regulate land use and development based on, you know, what they view as, as their development needs and based on their long-range planning goals. So really what we, we wish to achieve is what, what do we think would work for, for Fairfield?
And then my final question is, Commissioner Reese had asked about examples on that slide. And I thought there was one, one of them that you didn't give. Would you mind going back to that slide?
I think Commissioner Reese was asking for examples of, like, where are these zoning districts located in the city? And, um, so I, I don't know if you were asking about office commercial, but I'm happy to note where office commercial is. So-
That was the one I wanted. I didn't, I was curious to, an example for that one too, please. Thank you.
Yeah. So, uh, Green Valley Office Park, uh, just north of Business Center Drive, across from the center that has the, uh, the Safeway and the TJ Maxx. Another example is if you're going, uh, northbound on Oliver Road and it starts to kind of veer off like you're going to Travis or veering off like you're going to like Wood Creek, there's like these three, three-story office buildings across from Fairfield Corners. Those, those three buildings are zoned office commercial.
And I just want to say, I love how you can just have all this memorized and can direct us. I love it. Thank you, Jonathan. I appreciate it.
You've anticipated every question greatly.
It helps if you've worked here for a number of years and you live here as well.
Commissioner Gravy, you had another question? Then I'll get into mine.
I'm beginning to think that mine is more of a, a question for Jonathan, so it'll be better in the discussion area.
Okay. Should I go? Uh, it's more a clarification for myself. Uh, when we talk about mixed use, and it means we are bringing, uh, residential in, in the commercial zone. Am I right on that?
Yes.
And, uh, when we talk, uh, when we are, uh, going from, uh, commercial to residential, we see more residential, less commercial. See, we allow 90% residence and 10% only commercial. So we are entirely changing the, the, the very nature of, of that district or zone of particular parcel. So how should we address it, residents? So later on, how, how can we address it? Should we say it's more residential, less commercial or less commercial, more residential?
I mean, I would say that, just acknowledging that, most, most mixed use projects have more, usually tend to have more residential than commercial unless it's like a single studio over like a, like a storefront or something.
It does become more residential, less commercial. Cause only 10, 10% of it's commercial and 90% is residential. Basically, it becomes more residential. That's what I mean.
Yeah. And that's where we're, the balance we're looking to strike with, with the commission is what, what do you think is, should be in the right amount of commercial? I mean, sometimes maybe the market will determine that, but really that's what we want to hear from the, the commission.
Like the Aurora parcel, we did say 95% residential and only 5% commercial. So can we say this, it's basically is a residential zone now and only 5% is commercial?
That's, uh, I mean, if, so the commission is welcome to adjust the percentages that we, we put forward as recommendations. If, if it, the commission wishes to, you know, have a lower commercial threshold, so where mixed use projects have, you know, 5% commercial space, um, the commission's welcome to make that recommendation. And we would, you know, package those recommendations as part of the zoning ordinance amendments that would, you know, ultimately come back to this, this group for a formal recommendation to council. But really, the percentages, we're, we're laying that out for the commission to, to give us feedback on.
May I ask another question? Is there a way, um, and I don't know if this is in a, like a question for an attorney, but where we could create language that provides flexibility dependent on the market, the project, the location, but also establishes that, um, we don't want what to happen in, you know, with the Aurora project to happen. You know, like, I noticed there was one city that, you know, listed that they provide a lot of flexibility-
Yes.
And it goes to review board. Um, I'm just kind of thinking, I don't want it, I think, I don't want it to be so flexible where it's just dependent on those people on that board, but flexible enough, but then there's language that emphasizes that it needs to establish that it truly is a mixed use zone.
Yes. So, I mean, there is definitely, uh, kind of a double-edged sword here. If you're, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I, I'm just really concerned about the percentages. You know, I'm, I'm thinking about all the different buildings and, and that we have around here and just putting percentages, I don't know, I, I seem very challenged by that.
It, it's understandable. Um, so, I mean, it is a double-edged sword if, for the city that I referenced that allows, you know, full flexibility for the zoning administrator or the planning commission. Sure, that, that flexibility is good if you want to look at a project on a case-by-case basis. But if, uh, an applicant comes in and says, I'm invoking, and feel free, uh, Dave and Lori away, and if an applicant says, I'm invoking Senate Bill 330, which basically you're looking at objective design standards, so not like a flexible standard where you, the planning commission, have the discretion based on the project to say, I think this project should have 10% or I think this project should have, you know, 40%. The objective standard needs to be something that's quantifiable.
Hmm.
Otherwise, it's hard to enforce. So there's, that's the double-edged sword, I think, with, with trying to find that balance.
Yeah. And when, and when the law is increasingly telling us, you have to apply objective standards and that's, you know, anything that's mathematical and numeric is objective. We can tell very easily, does it meet it or not? It's sort of a, it's a blunt tool, but increasingly, the state is pushing us in a direction of being able to quantify these things so that we, so to give some certainty to developers. So upfront, they know, yes, I've met what's required and not have to come before a board for a subjective interpretation or, or decision on, is this enough? Is this not enough? Uh, don't, don't disagree that it's, you know, we, we like flexibility. Um, but increasingly, we're being put into a box by the state where we can't be so flexible that you leave developers with no, with no certainty walking into the hearing.
Now, i- if, if I'm, I'm going back to my SB 330, uh, education here. Um, if the commission did, said, okay, we want 40%, SB 330 limits the amount of commercial in an SB 330 project to 35%. So if we did 30% or 25%, then that meets all, all state guidelines with regard to the SB 330, Assembly Bill, I think, 101 or whatever. Um, so then we, we would meet those and there wouldn't be any, uh, subjective matter for, for a developer to come back and say, well, we only want to put 20% even though you're, you're requesting 30. And SB 330, the law itself says 35% commercial max, 65% residential.
I think-
Is that correct?
Everything you've said checks a box in my brain and says that, that, that's how it reads. Yes.
Okay. Aurora, Aurora, I spent many sleepless nights.
Yeah. We, we learned a lot about SB 330.
Oh, my God, right?
Aurora, which does pertain to, primarily to the residential components of a development-
Right.
Including mixed use development. Yeah. Gives those protections.
Okay.
Just one other follow-up on that. Let's say we establish 30%, 20%, whatever. The developer still has every right and ability to come before the commission and say-
I want a variance.
I want 10% or whatever. And we would have the capacity to, uh, so grant, correct?
Do you want me to, I can answer that question. Yeah. So if, um, if we, let's say we adopt the threshold of 10%, developer could come in and say, hey, 10% doesn't work. I actually want to file an application to amend the code. And it would go through planning commission for a recommendation and up to council. They could also apply for a variance, but a variance, you have to demonstrate that there is a hardship that is unique to, you know, some unusual circumstance, like with the parcel, for example, where you can't meet that, that development standard. Otherwise, if you try to, if we're forcing you to meet this development standard and you can't because of, you know, some irregularity or some unusual circumstance, then you would, you would see harm as a result of that.
Yeah. And another thought is that you could set a standard up here, but also put in, put language in the code that says the developer has the right to request a lower figure and the planning commission has the right to grant that. So at least we know for the basic question, does it meet or does it not, they got to hit up here. And then when they come into the hearing, you could relax that for them. But at least you're holding them to something that we know walking in, in the room. Does that meet the basics of what the code says, but you have the authority to relax that?
We hit on all of what I was thinking, so perfect. And, and I, I, I think I understand the clarity that we probably want to put that, that limit a little higher because we can, we can reduce it. But if we put it down here, we can't go up.
You can't make it go up. Yeah.
Understood. Okay.
Okay. Now I'll ask my questions. Um, very, early on, you talked about, I think it's maybe the second slide, 50% of the frontage and then we're talking 10%. Is 50% frontage or some other percent?
So I could actually, these, these questions, these three questions here-
From us?
They were from the first study session and the 50% of frontage in quotations, that was actually from our existing mixed use development regulations. There's some language that, that actually references 50% of frontage. So we really kind of wanted to kind of unpack that a little bit and get feedback from the commission. These questions are really just there for, for reference.
Okay.
And we'll get more, more in-depth on that question of frontage as we walk through the four, uh, uh, points that Jonathan will be looking for direction from you on.
Great. Now also, now the, the question that we're all kind of like, the location. And, and I'll, I'll use, uh, future pieces that I, that I can visualize. One is the Old Truck Scales slash Rockville Springs, 40 acres, um, multi, a multi-use project. Now I know in the, uh, Fairfield general plan that will be seen later on, there is a, uh, lack of a specific plan for that. Uh, the Cordelia, Sassoon, Gateway, mixed use that has, uh, different numbers. Um, and how will those different numbers, the general plan says compared to what we're doing here today? So like, if we're talking, you know, a 10 to 20%, but the gateway calls for, um, you know, a point three of non-residential, 1.5 maximum all uses residential, non-residential with 400 home maximum in that area. Um, is this going to be blended? Are, are those two things going to be blended in?
Yeah. I, I think I can answer this. I'm, I'm trying to remember precisely what the, what the wording of the draft general plan says. But the, the important thing with that project, this, um, at, uh, Sassoon Valley Road and, uh, Business Center Drive, is that, um, the general plan wants a commercial component and a residential component. It specifies, you know, higher density, I think at 18 units minimum, and then, uh, I think a minimum of 10 acres, something like that of commercial. On that site, the areas closer to Sassoon Valley Road, actually because of some of that, the, the toxics from the former truck scales, they've cleaned it up, but only to a certain level that does not allow residential on it. So that's a site where, the site as a whole will contain a mixture of uses, but they're going to be more separate from one another simply because of the, that you can't put residential on the portion that would be the commercial section.
And I won't get into the general plan questions because there's a lot I have on that. But, um, with regards to attachment to page one of two, um, under CM, mixed use, it's got, um, conditional permit for single-family detached housing. To me, mixed use isn't, isn't a neighborhood of single-family housing. To me, personally, mixed use is vertical, um, smaller units, more affordability, condos, townhomes, rentals, so that we have a, a lower entry point for people to, you know, where you'd have some 800, 900 square foot, uh, units at maybe second, third, fourth floor as a, I, I just have a real problem with, uh, single-family homes because now you got a, a situation where a developer can come in and say, okay, 10%, here it is. And I think, uh, Commissioner Paul suggested that as well. It's like, now all of a sudden, I'm going to bring in all- this residential housing, and it's really not a mixed use. It's more of a, it's just more of a development like, maybe like Cordelia is right now. You've got 3,000 houses down there with a gas station. "Oh, that's mixed use." Well, it really isn't mixed use. It's singular use with a hell of a lot of houses. And so I think we also need to, you know, talk about, do we want residential, single-family houses in a mixed use development? And I don't think, I personally don't think we should because mixed use is about the future. And, you know, at a future date, I can bring out all the research I've been doing on mixed use parcels and what, you know, millennials are expecting with mixed use projects and going vertical and having that transportation center, the ability to walk to restaurants and stores and things along those lines. And that's what I think we want to create, and that's what I think the general plan wants to create down there as well. But the way this is written right now, you know, a developer could come in and say, "Okay, I'm going to put 10 acres of commercial and the other 30 acres are going to be single-family houses." That's not, I don't think that's what we're looking at there. And I know the general plan in that has some generalities, but going on to the other location that I was thinking of, that I mentioned earlier, is downtown on West Texas Street that the city is trying to get development on, you know. That would be another mixed use project. And there, you know, does that percentage work there as well? Because you want that front, you want that West Texas Street on the bottom floor to have. You don't want it to be 10%, you don't want it to be 10% commercial. You want it to be a higher grade because it's downtown, and probably the specific plan for Heart of Fairfield probably takes care of that, but.
To answer, I can answer a few of your questions. So as far as West Texas and the greater downtown, the discussion that we're having today doesn't pertain to West Texas Street.
I would just use that as an example.
No, for sure. I mean, I just want to make clear that the Heart of Fairfield plan has its own zoning districts that do address mixed use projects and have completely different thresholds. As far as the mixed commercial zone goes, we didn't actually reference mixed commercial for the sake of the mixed use development regulations discussion because you can already do residential and the CM or mixed commercial zone by right. And those zoning districts are super far and few. There's like a, maybe, I don't know, 10 houses on Travis Boulevard that have CM zoning before you get to North Texas. So it's not, and they're single-family homes, so it's not really like a commercial zoning district like thoroughfare commercial or community commercial. As far as concerns about single-family homes being able to be considered like the residential piece as part of a mixed use project, definitely we hear the concern, and we are planning to come back with a package of zoning ordinance amendments that would include the mixed use direction, but also other items that we've identified. So that, you know, may be something that we include.
Okay.
So a couple of things as well. To clarify, internally at the staff level, we've always looked at the CM zone, the mixed commercial zone, as probably the wrong name for that zone because the vast majority of the uses in the very small area, we don't have a whole lot of land designated CM. Some of it's around the post office and some of those streets around there. The vast majority of it is actually residential with a little bit of commercial. It's almost intended to support some neighborhood commercial dropped into a already single-family zone, but our code does allow single-family with a use permit in those four, at least, I don't know if all four, but at least three of those four, maybe not the office commercial, but does allow with a use permit, single-family in those commercial districts, that when we talk residential versus commercial, we could be talking single-family detached housing. If the commission wishes to give some direction and say, "We don't think in these commercial, in these mixed use projects, you should have single-family," although we didn't put it up there as a question, that's certainly something that you can provide direction on if you'd like to.
Thank you. And then this would, the questions we answered tonight will also satisfy any of those SB 330 potential effects, correct?
Yeah, it will definitely help us as we review them under SB 330.
All right, that was the main, I think. All right, any other questions? Are we all good? One more? Commissioner Paul?
Okay, in that attachment, I think it's page, attachment one, page one, and it says, "Mixed use residential development regulations are 25, 22 dot 4 dot 3, and down there, ground floor residential uses." It says, "For all buildings facing an arterial public state, no more than 50% of the occupied frontage facet on the ground floor facing the state shall be devoted to a residential use." It means, we said, if the new building is facing the arterial public state, so we can't give 50%, not more than 50% to residential. Well, in this, otherwise, it says on a, on page three of your report, it says, "For buildings that face a arterial road, 100% of the ground floor facet that faces the arterial road has to be given to the commercial occupancy." So are we going to change this ground four with that new process? What are we doing?
Yeah, so the commercial thresholds, the feedback that the commission gives us on commercial thresholds would affect this particular section that says ground floor residential uses. It would be amended to reflect the direction that the commission provides.
It will be amended on 1st.
Sorry?
So it will be amended?
If we get direction, if the commission wishes to give, you know, direction on the commercial thresholds-
Correct.
We would come back at a future date with a package of proposed zoning ordinance amendments. So you would see this section of the zoning ordinance with amended to reflect that direction from the commission. And then, commission would be making a formal recommendation whether to adopt or not, and it would go to council for final action, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, and when we're done with the questions and we turn it back to Jonathan to walk you through the specific, I think there's four items we're looking for direction on. One of them is that very topic. Right now, the only direction that is in our ordinance currently is that particular language that says for buildings that face an arterial, essentially, no more than 50% of the frontage can be re, I'm sorry, can be residential. So that's our only standard right now. We'll walk through that and ask you, is that good or do you want to change it? Perhaps you want 100%, you know, so that the whole of that first floor is commercial, or 75, or maybe you like 50. When we get to that, we'll walk through that and we'll let the commission weigh in and give some direction as to whether or not you want that 50% changed.
Okay. So no further questions at this point. I will now open the public comment period. We have no cards. I have no hands raised. So would staff like to respond to any of the issues raised by the commissioners?
I think we did a fairly decent job addressing issues and comments as they came up. As we noted, we do have four areas of focus that we wish to get feedback on, so more than happy to go through each of those.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment period and turn it back, and now you can lead us to the discussion of those four questions. How's that?
Yes.
So the first area would be for minimum commercial thresholds for an integrated center, and these are centers that, you know, have, you know, multiple owners, you know, have some common parking areas. So think of like a shopping center where you have multiple parcels and you have multiple owners, or think of like an office park. You could think of Green Valley Office Park, for example.
The little project that the Aurora parcel is in is an integrated mixed center. It wasn't master planned, but it is, it's an integrated center where all the parcels work together.
So a question for the commission, is the commission okay with an integrated center for all parcels that propose residential to also include commercial? So in other words, if I'm coming in and I'm like, "Hey, I want to develop the Aurora site under these standards, I would have to provide a commercial component." Is the commission okay with that? And if the commission is okay with that, are you also okay with the caveat that if, let's say, let's say Green Valley Office Park doesn't exist and it's, we're planning this out from the beginning, a master plan development, are you okay with a parcel having all residential? And if you are okay with it being all residential, do you think that a 50% ground floor max on residential uses for the entire center is appropriate? So those are some of the aspects that we would like feedback on. And of course, these percentages can fluctuate. They don't have to be 50%.
So going back to Aurora, part of the, if I remember correctly, part of the developer's reasoning about only having 100 square feet was the other buildings had enough retail and commercials to make up for their parcel, even, because it was kind of a multiple landowners, correct? Or more, multiple parcels, might have been single landowner, but yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they necessarily came to us and said, "We're proposing all residential because there's enough." I think they looked at the market and said, "The market is demanding residential, not retail, and therefore, you know, we want to look and build what we can sell, which is residential."
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and talk about percentage here? Do we want no more than 50%? Do we want to, you know, how do we want to tackle this question so there's enough ambiguity for them to come back for a lower amount if they see fit?
May I make a comment before we begin? I'm not sure if the question should be phrased in that manner because that presupposes that everyone on the commission is just focusing on the percentage. I would like to just have an open discussion, and each commissioner states what they're thinking. If they want to talk about percentages, great. If they want to change something else, great. I don't think we should frame the question of what aspect of it should we discuss. Thank you.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes, Joe. I have a comment or suggestion to make. Whenever we have mixed use, can we do like the ground floor all commercial and first floor, second floor, all residential? Can it be done? And if we leave on the ground floor, we can make a hallway. There could be lift, there could be a stairway, so it can go upstairs. So that will, it won't lose much of the commercial space, then the residential could be on the first floor and second floor. The reason I'm saying, I hail from India and we have shop complements there. All the ground floors are shops or commercial on the first floor, second floor, third floor, and they have all residences. Can we do something like that?
That's certainly an option. Three of the cities that I referenced, that I looked at, their zoning ordinances, they don't allow ground floor residential unless it's behind the ground floor commercial. They don't really quantify how that looks, but basically, yeah, the commission could give direction to have ground floor commercial, no ground floor residential, essentially.
May I ask a question? The Sunrise zoning area, it has the commercial in the front and then like the T-Mobile and the battery shop, that's the one, right? And then behind it is the, is like a, is like an apartment complex?
Yeah, I'll pull it up just for the sake of reference. So interestingly enough, the building on the corner of Cement Hill in North Texas is actually not part of Sunrise, believe it or not. It's its own commercial development. So all the commercial on Sunrise is the area that's kind of largely highlighted off of North Texas in the little rectangle. So it's horizontal mixed use, essentially. You've got single-story buildings with the commercial spaces on the front of the building, and then you have apartments to the back that are also in the same building, same floor.
And do you know the percentage of how that was? I'm just curious, just trying to visualize, like what was zone residential and what, like, how much of that parcel is commercial versus residential?
I don't have the breakdown, but I know that based on square footage, most of the parcel is residential. I will say that when this project went through the planning process, it was like 2016, so there was, these mixed use regulations looked very different from even what's in front of you today.
So the building that says commercial, not part, that's the T-Mobile?
Correct. That's its own commercial project.
I see, okay. And then there's the other businesses in front, okay.
Yeah. There's, I think, a metro and a few other spots like right there. Those are all part of Sunrise mixed use. This building on the corner is, it just so happened that it kind of got redeveloped at the same time.
That's the one with Fire Wings and the old battery store, Batteries and More. Yeah, that's a separate, that's the separate one where the other two buildings.
So what are the commercial buildings there, if you know?
Yeah, the commercial buildings are largely the two buildings that-
I'm sorry, I meant what's the retail or what's the non-residential stores or?
Yeah, it's, so this zoning is office commercial, so you have a dental office, you have-
So you've, I'm looking at it, I'm looking at Google Street View, so you have a partner's personnel, which is probably a HR service for smaller business. You have the Neptune Society. So they are more, you can think of this as a more of an office, kind of a frontage. The retail is the one that's not a part.
Thank you.
And then there's some vacancies and, looks like T-Mobile. T-Mobile is in the corner of the commercial building.
I thought you all said it. If I could?
Yes, sir.
So I tend to agree with Mr. Paul's point of view. However, I think that what we've already got written is not, isn't it not more than?
The, what we have written as a recommendation or what's in our existing-
What is existing, I think. It's in the red. I don't have it here in front of me right now. You put it up, you put it up on the screen. There. Oh, I'm sorry, it's not in the red, but no more than 50% of the master plan shall be residential. So it says not more than, so it could be less than. It could be zero.
Yeah, so this particular, this particular recommendation deals with centers where you have like multiple parcels, like Green Valley Office Park. So this is essentially saying that unless it was like some pre-planned master plan development, every parcel has to have commercial.
Okay.
And then it's saying, but it's allowing for, if we have a situation where we, someone's coming in and they're developing like an integrated center or some master plan development, let's say that Green Valley Office Park was all planned out from the very beginning. They came in and got entitlements for everything that they've laid out. If they wanted, under this regulation that we're recommending, if they wanted one of the parcels to be residential and the rest be commercial or office, under this language, they can, but it sets a cap on the amount of residential in that master plan development. So it sets a cap, basically, like you can't-
For the ground floor or for the whole project?
For the ground floor space.
Yeah.
Yes, so you, even if it was master planned and someone's like, "I want like four of the five parcels to be residential, and I just want this little office building," under this language, you wouldn't be able to do that.
That's right.
It's capped, the residential is capped at 50%.
Okay, all right.
So going back to Green Valley, so the, I guess, I don't know what the name is, Green Valley 3?
Yes.
So you've got residence in, you've got the office building, you've got Green Valley 3 in behind. That would be a situation where there's three parcels, that one would be the residential, and the others would all be, and it would be more than 50%, correct?
If it were master planned?
Yes.
And it was a commercial zoning district, yes. In that particular case, that was a rezone to, to-
Because it was all commercial.
It was actually all industrial.
Industrial.
But, but if that was an example of a commercial site, the way you've described it, yes.
That's what I was trying, yeah, I was using that as an example.
That's correct. You'd have more than 50% of the ground floor would be commercial between the office and the residents in.
And the residential's behind where on the street side, everything was commercial, which is- Okay. Sir?
For the sake of giving some feedback, from my perspective, I think having 50% as a criteria, given the nature of Fairfield, you know, we're not quite the density as other major metropolitan areas, is probably fine. And then as long as there's language that would allow for a review and adjustment based on the specifics of the project, that, that would be my feedback.
Yes, and-
Okay. Next.
Maybe we should go down the, the dais.
Okay.
Let's do, is that agreeable to the commissioners that we go down the dais?
I, I try to keep it an open discussion, so Commissioner Singh, go ahead.
Yes, that works. So I want to co-sign what Commissioner, I want to co-sign what Commissioner Matthew said. I am also in agreement that no more than 50% of ground floor space in a master plan center shall be residential. I'm in agreement with that. I think we should move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
I just have a question about when, so there's no way, I think somebody had raised a question like this before, but just trying to think of, there's no way that there's multiple parcels in a zone where, I'm trying to formulate, make this clear, sorry guys. I think there was a slide up once and we, there was a question asked about what if they have different owners? But if it's a, so nothing's going to get passed, I guess, a master plan, that's what I'm kind of wondering, to where we're never going to have an issue where there's different owners of different parcels with different ideas of what they want to build on them or develop? Is that, is, are you guys kind of understanding where my?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
If you're, so if, if we have a situation where there's a collection of parcels that are undeveloped and there's multiple owners that want to do a master plan development, in order to take the application in and process it, we would need each of those property owners to sign off on filing that application and essentially kind of putting support around that, that vision under that master plan.
But what if it isn't a master plan? What if they just want to develop their own parcel?
Then-
Do we have a problem?
No, but under this recommendation, they would have to include a commercial component. So if every, if they're like, hey, we want to, we want to do, you know, residential and commercial in this office park, if it's not master planned and they just want to do their own thing, then they would have to-
Okay.
They'd have to provide that commercial.
I see.
And then that commercial development would be subject to the thresholds on the next slides.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, to be, to be clear, the, the topic of a single owner of a parcel within that larger center, the next set of, the next set of questions, we'll get back to that. So this one just deals with where you're master planning everything upfront, suggestion that at least 50% of that be commercial or-
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me go to Commissioner Paul first, then I'll come, I'm going to come right on the line.
Okay. Like I suggested, I'll still see if my, my suggestion gathers, gathers any more support, like ground floor, all, all commercial and the first and second floor, if it's a possibility, all, all residential. But if it doesn't get more support, I will go with 50% of the floor space, 50/50. That, that is my, my suggestion on that.
Commissioner Greedy? Well, I, I just, I like the idea frankly of the entire ground floor being commercial from a security point of view. You lock that down, everybody goes home at night, all the residential's above that. I, I can see a benefit to that. On the developer's side, if a developer comes in and says, this is nuts, I don't, I don't believe that I can have commercial here and make it work. Once again, we, we run up against this, my objective is not to make it harder, my objective frankly is to make it easier for developers to, to put something in that has quality, but, and meets the needs of our community. So if we went with, and this is the question, I guess, if we go with no more than 50% ground floor, they could come to us and say, we want the entire bottom floor to be commercial and we've still satisfied that?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Matthews? Commissioner Orblin?
Question, in this statement, does this mean that each parcel in the, in the project has to have some commercial or just one particular building has to have the commercial?
So for, the first part of that, that first bullet point means that every parcel needs commercial, unless it's master planned. If it's master planned, then you could have, you could have one parcel be all residential, just as long as that one parcel's square footage isn't more than 50% of the entire development's ground floor square footage.
Yeah, it's not each building, that's 50% of the total ground floor has to be commercial minimum.
And so to be clear, we, we got a little bit of direction at your previous, your previous study session, then a little bit more at the general plan workshop. And that's, that first bullet basically comprises the direction we have so far, which says the commission wants to see commercial in every building. That was the direction that we heard, unless from day one, you master plan the whole site and you say, okay, this piece is going to be residential, this piece is going to be commercial. So that's what the first bullet says. The second bullet says for those centers where it's all master planned at one time upfront, there's, right now, there's no, there's no standard, there's no threshold to determine, well, how much residential's too much or how much commercial is enough. So it proposes as a starting point for discussion, 50% of the ground floor in those master plan centers. And that's, with that, with that second, so the first bullet, we've gotten the direction, the second bullet is what we're asking, for those master plan centers is 50% a good number. Do you want a number? Maybe you, maybe you don't, maybe you don't want any standard at all, but again, we definitely heard you get a little uncomfortable when, when they're not providing, or when they're only providing a, a, a real small amount. So the question for debate is, should we set a, should we set a percentage and, you know, is 50% a good number or do you want more, do you want less?
Go ahead.
And I, I do remember in the conversation that I was personally okay with not necessarily every business having commercial and maybe some have residential or that mixed used. I may have been in the minority during that discussion, but I was comfortable with that. I didn't have that strong objective, objection, I should say. And the last one, I think similarly to others, I think the no more than 50%, I think that's fine. I do have some trepidation about setting a standard as X and then saying the commission can do case by case and decide, okay, you know, for applicant A, we can modify that, applicant B, maybe not, unless there's clear standards, because otherwise, it's just, it could be subjective or there could be bias and bias in making those determinations. So if we're going to have a standard, we should go with the standard and not set it and then say, but you can, you know, appeal, well, obviously you can appeal it, but not set it with that mindset that you can appeal it and that we can just decide, because otherwise then it's, you know, what's the criteria for those decisions? And if there's that criteria, then we should put it in the zoning standards.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to decipher a little bit here. Help me. So I've got a pretty clear consensus that no more than 50% of the ground floor space in a master plan center shall be residential. I've got mixed views on whether there should be a caveat on this ability of the applicant to possibly request a lower standard of that for a, on a different basis.
I'd like to speak to that.
Sure.
I, I understand the concern about there being a bias, but no two pieces of property are the same. And you're talking to business people that are trying to develop a piece of property and they, in, in one area, it's going to make sense, in another area, it may not. And that is our job, is to help those people make, we are supposed to make that decision on whether it's going to fit in a specific area or not. I prefer to have some latitude to enable that developer the opportunity to be successful.
I, I also think that the buffer in this would be the, the planning department where an applicant would come in and say, you know, we want to do 30% on this parcel, and planning is going to say, yeah, that, that probably isn't going to fly, you know? This is, you know, we can push it through, but, you know, based upon our experiences, I mean, that's, a lot of what you do is negotiate that before it gets done.
We, we work through it, we review, are there particular conditions here that are, that make it worth that consideration? Staff will then make a recommendation to you and will have some substantive basis for giving you a recommendation, should that, should that standard be relaxed for this particular applicant.
Commissioner Matthews?
We're not dealing with hundreds, we're dealing with handfuls. And I think that also supports what Commissioner Greedy just said.
I'm trying to figure, I, I'm, I'm just visually picturing the city of Fairfield and how many large parcels would actually be, you know, considered anymore.
Yeah.
There's not a, there's, there's a handful, you know, because most of the city's been master planned out now, there's just pockets here and there, so.
I think we'll find, find more on the next set of bullets where it's individual parcels within a larger center. That's the kind of thing where I think we'll have more, more commonly, and we'll get to those.
So is the commission good with having some type of wording that doesn't make them come back for variance? Is that proper? Question to ask.
Gives the planning commission the authority to relax that standard on a case by case basis.
Are you all in agreement with that?
No. Thank you.
I like having the flexibility, but can I ask a question about that Sunrise building? I just want to know, the apartment complex and then the, the buildings in front, like the dental building, was that one parcel? Was that developed by one developer and one parcel?
I think it's two parcels.
It's two parcels.
But it is the same developer, same owner.
But it's two par, okay.
Yeah.
Because I just was thinking, like that parcel with the, the way that, the way that the commercial space is in front and then the apartment is in the back, like the frontage, it, it looks good, it like conforms with that area, so, but it sounds like if they were going to do that again, we would say that the apartment would have had to have commercial space at the bottom. Is that what we're saying?
As long as it didn't exceed 50%.
I just want to clarify that this particular, Sunrise actually doesn't quite fall under an integrated center.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it sounds like it's, it's six one for some type of a situation where the planning commission can have some latitude in, in lowering standards of, of this.
Yeah, so I think what, what staff has heard is that a majority of the commission supports in a master plan center requiring at least, essentially at least 50% of that ground floor to be commercial with some language giving the planning commission the authority to rela, to relax that standard on a case by case basis.
Correct.
Okay. We heard that.
Question, is it that they have to have at least 50% or no more than 50%?
So you can read it either way, at least 50% commercial or no more than 50% residential? If the commission has a preference one way or the other, we're happy to word it.
I was just wanting to clarify. Thank you.
All right.
I, I do think it would make more sense to say at least 50% commercial, in my mind.
When I read it, that's what I thought of every time too, so. All right, excellent. Now we can go on to question two.
Sorry, it's, there we go. Okay, so for the, the second item for feedback from the commission, these are standalone parcels or individual parcels in a non-master plan center. So you could think of Aurora as an individual parcel in a non-master plan center, or you could think of any collection of single parcels along North Texas Street. So the first of the, of these two standards that we want feedback on is for buildings that face an arterial road, 100% of the ground floor facade facing the arterial and 20% of the ground floor area for the, or the floor area for the ground floor is required to be designated for commercial occupancy independent of the residential use. So there's lots in pack there, but essentially that's saying on, on an arterial road, North Texas Street is an arterial, that the-
We probably all, we probably all have a little bit definition of an arterial road, depending where we live, because I, I think of all, I think of Business Center Drive, all of it as a-
That's an arterial road.
Bigger, bigger roads that carry higher volumes of traffic, Pennsylvania Avenue, Travis Boulevard, North Texas Street, Business Center Drive, those are all arterial level roads.
So let me give you an example. It's a, let's say you have a single parcel, one building, and you want to do mixed use. And it's an arterial, it's on North Texas Street. Under this standard, the, the building, the ground floor facade has to all be commercial. It can't be like the middle of the building is commercial and then there's some residential kind of wrapping on the ground floor. So that's, that's the building frontage. As far as the overall ground floor area, 20% of that ground floor area would need to be commercial and the rest, you could have ground floor residential, it just, you know, it could be the other 80% of the, of the first floor. So that's, that's standard. And then one caveat that we included is, or not caveat, but something they consider is independent of the residential use. So that's trying to avoid a situation where a residential developer comes in and they're like, well, actually, I'm, my clubhouse is the commercial component, my manager's office is the commercial component, my, I don't know, the, the rec facility that you need to be a tenant to use is the commercial component. So that's just making clear that these are separate commercial tenant spaces.
So again, this is a starting place for discussion and you might, an example, although I'm not sure it's exact, but you could use the building on Sunrise?
Yeah, you can.
If you want to bring that up. You know, if we think of that as, as its own, just a single parcel on, on, a single building on a single parcel, that standard, the way it would be worded, if that one, that one main building that faces North Texas Street, the entire frontage under this proposal would have to be commercial on the ground floor and at least 20% of the total square footage. So you couldn't have like a five foot deep, you know, area designated for commercial, that yeah, the frontage looks commercial, but it's really so narrow, it's not real substantive. So it proposes 20% of that floor area on the ground floor. And again, these are starting points for discussion. As I noted earlier, the only standard we actually do have says 50% of that facade has to be, has to be commercial. So this would, you know, this asks the question, do you want more so that the entire face looks commercial? And if so, also, how much of that, that first floor do you want to see occupied by commercial uses?
Commissioner Singh, we'll come down the line again.
Yes, certainly. I think that staff's recommendation was perfectly written because the arterial roads in Fairfield are the most busy and I feel like we have an obligation to make sure that- And I feel like we have an obligation to make sure that retailers can succeed on these roads. And so having 100% of the, and so having 100% of the ground floor space that fronts the main arterial roads is important. I don't think we should go down from that, 100% is appropriate. And, and then as I was reading staff's report, I was thinking to myself, okay, 100% of the frontage seems a little excessive. Maybe 75% might be, might be, might be better because you still need to have access for the residents to have their amenities to go up and down the second, third and fourth story of the building potentially. But I realized that this is 100% of, this is 100% of the frontage on these roads, but 20% of the ground floor area for these buildings. And so that was really well written and I think that, that's pretty good.
Commissioner Reese?
I like the way that it's written.
Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, I do agree with Mr. Singh's comments, yeah.
I, I just wonder if we shouldn't simplify it and make it the same as, as the other one and do the 50%. But I'm just throwing that out there and there may be a drawback. I do see one advantage to having at least 20% residential on the bottom in that if, if a developer did it, maybe they're only going two stories. They don't want to spend the money to put in an elevator, yet they still need to be able to provide for handicapped individuals for housing. That would enable that, them to do that.
And that 20% aspect of the floor area would, would accomplish that same thing?
Right.
I can support this language.
I want 90, not, no, I'm just kidding, I completely, I support this.
So I think we've got a pretty good consensus here that we're, we'll, we'll go with the recommendation here.
Okay, thank you. So the next bullet point is, could play out in, in two scenarios, so I'm just going to walk you through that. So for any other buildings on a mixed use parcel, a minimum of 10% of the ground floor area shall be designed for a commercial occupancy independent of the residential use. The required 10% of commercial floor area per building may be combined and located in any building on the parcel. So you could see this standard applying in, in two cases. The first case, let's go to Sunrise mixed use. So Sunrise has an arterial street frontage, but it also has other buildings. So under this language, the other buildings that aren't on the arterial, that aren't on North Texas Street would have to have 10% commercial per building. The second scenario where you could see this happening is a, a commercial street that's not an arterial. So there's, there's a handful, I, I don't know them off the top of my head, but there's a handful of commercial zones that happen to have like non-arterial frontage. So let's say it's a parcel that's on, you know, like a non, you know, major street, like an arterial. This, this standard, the second bullet would apply, which basically it's a 10% of the ground floor area being designated for a commercial occupancy. And it also allows, if you have multiple buildings to combine. What does the commission think about that standard?
And if you go back to that, that exhibit you showed, and again, we wrote this one based on the direction that we heard from the commission at your last study session, that you wanted every building to have commercial. That was what we heard. But we did add some modification to create some flexibility so that they could take those 10% and put them in, either combine them into one building. The idea is you're getting some substance of commercial, you're not getting 150, a little 150 foot, square foot coffee kiosk while still following the instructions from the commission that you do want some consideration for each of those other buildings.
Or is this one of those ones where we want to also have that not more than 50% for the total?
Yeah, and you can also reconsider your direction that each building have it.
May I ask a question about the, the photo? The red rectangles, can you, can you just point out which building, buildings on there is the apartment complex?
Yes, so I, I want to note that, what's this, we'll exclude the building on the left, bottom left-hand corner since it's not part of the project. Actually, every single building within Sunrise mixed use has residential.
It's, it's really disguised well.
Yeah, so there, there's.
It's dis- it's disguised very well because you don't see, when, when you're there, you don't see those apartments unless, because I go to that FireWings a lot, sorry. So when you leave, you see the apartments on the backside, but those, those other ones, you, you don't realize it when you're there. It just, they've done a very good job of concealing the, the apartments from North Texas Street, I think, so.
So, so then if this new language that you're proposing, are, did you, are those red rectangles on the back buildings, are you saying that that would have to be commercial?
It would either have to be commercial or they'd have to take whatever the 10% of those two buildings, ground floor area and combine it elsewhere. So if they have commercial that they're already providing, they would have to supplement the commercial space that they're providing to not have to provide commercial in every single building. That's based on what we're recommending, commission may, may wish to give other direction or may wish to support.
And this is only for buildings in the back or not on an arterial street?
I, I like that project, the way that it looks, and I, I'm just trying to think of ways to, you know, I, I would hate to add language that would not have allowed that to happen. So, so it sounds like the language currently that you have written, they couldn't do that. They couldn't do what is, has already been developed.
The, so the language that we have in, in front of you would, this project would, would have been altered slightly.
Okay.
It may not, it may read the same way, but it, you might see more, more commercial than would have otherwise been required.
Or they could take what the code requires in those two small rectangles, whatever that square footage is, and potentially add it to that front building on North Texas Street on that same parcel. You know, right now, it requires at least 20, you know, if, if you go with, I think we went with, you, you agreed with the standard of 20% in that frontage building. In that case, with this project, maybe it was 30% because you took some of, some of the extra square footage from the smaller buildings in the back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matthews, you had a.
Simply put, it means to be a mixed use project, it's got to be 10% non-residential. And I like that.
Commissioner Gruyev?
Just for clarity, they, that doesn't mean they can't come to the planning commission to make a, a, a small adjustment if necessary.
If, you know, go ahead.
I was going to say, if the commission wishes to give direction on like an adjustment clause that applies to, you know, multiple standards under these thresholds, that's something the commission can give us direction on. I've, I've seen in other zoning ordinances, something similar for like parking standards.
Right.
But usually there's some caveats, you have to demonstrate, we'll lower your parking standard, but you have to demonstrate X, Y, or Z.
So using as an example, not the project specifically, Aurora, because it's not on, on an arterial street, that would have been required, that project then would have been required 10%.
Correct, 10% per building.
Bring, bring that other slide up that shows the buildings, there you go.
So the, want to make very clear, the, the language is per building, so we, we want the commission to weigh in on, on that. Just want to make that clear.
Okay, I just want to make it clear that 10% of per building is 10% of per project if you allow them to be combined in one building.
Yes, yeah, so again, and this is, this is probably even a better example. The direction we heard from the planning commission at the last study session was every building for, you know, if it's not facing the arterial, all these ones in the back, every building needed to have commercial. So we wrote the standard to address that. We, we proposed as a starting point for discussion, 10% of the floor area for each building so that you've got some substance that's greater than that little 150 square foot coffee kiosk. But we added the caveat to give some flexibility that they could take each of those rectangles, add them together and put them in, put them in one building.
So per building, per, per parcel, the wording could be 10%, a minimum of 10% per building or the entire parcel must be 10, you know, must comprise 10% of the floor area? So like if you've got 100, say it's 50,000, 50,000.
I think, I think what you've described is actually, the, the way staff's proposed it achieves exactly what you said without having to describe whether it's per parcel or per building. The fact that they can move it around amongst the buildings on that parcel suggests it's all on one parcel, it's all that 10%.
And that gives the business, the developer, the option to create the best project, so, okay.
And again, with this standard, Aurora would have had to have provided about 2,500 square feet of commercial rather than 150 square feet.
Yeah, my suggestion is to eliminate the per building. Frankly, I don't remember that from our discussion, but I think it should just be 10% per project and simplify it. Because a developer is going to look at this and say, what are you thinking? That no one, no developer would want to have 10% in building three.
Do you want to key, it simplifies it and just say 10%? For buildings that don't face the arterial, for all, for all buildings on part, I think staff, we can, we can figure out how to word it. I think I, I get what you say, if the commission wants to simplify it and just make it 10% on that parcel, I think we can, we can do that.
I'm in a, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Matthews. I'm, I'm not in favor and I also don't remember the discussion, and I'm sure it happened, that each building that non-arterial road needs to have the 10%. I think it's too complex, I don't think it's necessary. If we want to set a standard, I'm fine with maybe 5%, 10% of the entire project and not, you know, going through building by building and doing all those calculations. And I'm fine with maybe five, I don't know, 5% or something.
My, my concern is just that we don't minimize the amount of commercial on a mixed use that's designed for commercial, so. So, so I think the wording should say not less than 10%.
Just to clarify, the Sunrise project, that was two different parcels. So if the developer came and said, I have a project that I want to develop with my two parcels, notwithstanding the frontage issue, then they would only have to develop 10% on their project within the two parcels?
Well, Sunrise is on North Texas Street, which is an arterial, so they got the 20%.
Well, I, I'm saying outside of that factor.
20% on the front building, 10% on the back parcel.
And they could move the, is the commission okay with a developer being able to transfer that 10%? Like when you have an arterial where there's that 20%, so basically 30%.
Well, the numbers may not be the same because you may have different sized buildings, but.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I, I think I understand, yeah.
All right, great.
So it's per project, not necessarily the, the parcel, like if a developer owned multiple parcels? Right?
Well, if that back, say that back parcel was 50,000 square feet and his front parcel's 50,000 square feet and he wanted to move that 5,000 square feet to the front parcel and make it now 30%, that would be sufficient there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, and we can, we can, we can word it, when we come back to you with the proposed changes to the code, we, we can word that.
Thank you. Okay, next question?
So the final question of the, of the day is building transparency. I'll, I'll go ahead and just read the standard again just for, for reference. So essentially, we're asking the commission if you wish to require a certain percentage of building frontage transparency and for 60% for buildings that face a public street, the street facing ground floor, so have 60% minimum transparency for thoroughfare commercial, community commercial and neighborhood commercial and 30% for office commercial. And when you think transparency, you think windows and storefront doors that have transparent materials, basically storefront glass.
And why don't you bring up that, that little building example that shows what 60% is? And so this building that you see here, this is an example that we found from another jurisdiction. This is a multi-story building and so you've got residential above, commercial on the first floor. And Jonathan, can you show how the 60%, you know, the 60% on that first floor?
Yes, so you'll notice that it's not, it's really just a really limited area that is needing to be 60%. So in, in the case of this particular jurisdiction, it's essentially two and a half feet off the ground and up to seven feet. So it's not including like the areas above like. Exactly, where you could have a sign, so it's just a really limited area, kind of basically at like, you know, average, like kind of eye, eye level.
Yeah, so 60% in, in this, essentially, if you look, if you look here, you can see the dividing line between the first floor and the second floor. You've got a, you've got a little foundation element that's not trans, not transparent. You have the windows and doors that are transparent. And then above that, you've got the facade above the windows that's still on the first floor where they can put signs and things like that. 60% has most of that with glass and windows, but it does have the arrow, the area between the arrows, you know, some of that is still not transparent. So that gives you a sense, you know, for, for the buildings that face the arterial, is this the kind of look and amount of windows? Is that too much, maybe 50%?
It's so, it's so much project by project, because I think of the Sunrise where that makes total sense. But then I look at Holiday Lane and you look at, what's, Bevmo, where they've got the glass in front, but, but it's all blacked out because, and for safety purposes, right, it's like, okay. And then I look down in Cordelia at the Boot Barn there off.
It's like Central, one of those, yeah.
So, and then you've got two sides, you've got two sides that, that's all glass, but then again, it's covered up and then they've got, you know, the accordion gates to prevent, you know, because we've had issues in, in this city and other cities where they'll just go barreling through the glass, you know, and, and for nefarious purposes. So this looks good, but you know, it's on a case by case basis where, you know, if you have a bank there, what do you do, right? So those are just some of the questions that I pop up from, from a development standpoint of different businesses may require something different, but you want that cohesive look for, to invite people to come into your store, so. Commissioner Singh?
Yes, um, when I was first, um, when I was first reading this and I saw the 60% transparency for the three different commercial zoning districts, I thought 60% is way too low. That, that just seems way too low, but then when I saw the visuals, I was like, okay, 60% is more than enough transparency for a mixed use type of project. And so I think that 60% is fair and reasonable for the mixed use type of development that Fairfield is going to attract.
Thank you, Commissioner Reese?
I, I, I agree, I like it, and I raised some concerns and now I'm just thinking about wanting to. I don't know if there's a way to pay in flexibility for those sort of things, but I don't know.
If the commission wishes to have a, an overall adjustment clause, we'd be happy to craft some language. That way there is some, some relief without having to like apply for a variance or a code text amendment.
Commissioner Paul?
Yeah, on, on this diagram, it says two and a half feet from the bottom and then from two and a half feet to seven feet, it becomes four and a half feet. And if the roof is at nine, nine feet, usually, so it becomes only 50%. So I don't think it's a 60% in the present diagram shows. So I don't think it's a sixty percent in the present diagram shows. It's only fifty percent.
Usually they're ten feet because you've got all the drop-down ceilings. Because you have, you have to be able to conceal the ceiling and the sprinkler systems from, for the most part, so that usually comes down to that, that upper soffit. So that's why I think they gave a two and a half or three feet above that seven feet for, for HVAC and sprinklers and all that. Would that be about right?
So this came from the city of Vallejo, but I think that your, I think your suspicions as to why it's measured the way it is, I think, I think that makes sense.
Yeah. What I meant, if it's nine feet height and four and a half feet is exactly fifty percent of the transparency, so.
I know that's how it is, but. If the, I mean, I will, I will say, if the, yeah, if it was like going up to nine feet, then maybe, maybe this wouldn't quite be sixty percent.
Yeah, that's what.
I trust that this, this exhibit is, is trying to show sixty percent.
It says on the sign, oh, minimum sixty percent, they say they shall be opening, so. We had to raise it more.
But if the commission looks at this and says, well, I'm not quite sure sixty percent might be a little too much, you know, you can recommend fifty. Even fifty gets a substantial amount of glass.
I would recommend fifty percent instead of sixty.
I think we're trying to just avoid a situation and also hearing feedback from the commission where you, you want some, some level of, you know, I use, I use the word interface a lot, but you basically, we're trying to avoid a situation where a facade has like, I don't know, a little like sliver of a window and a door in a commercial mixed-use project. So that, that's really what this is trying to achieve, but, yeah.
You, you want to have that soffit area, that facade up there, large enough to be able to put a proper signage up there, but yet small enough that the inside is very inviting and bright and clear, that people want to come in. And if you shrink it too much, it does have that detrimental effect. Because I have to deal with that with airports. You have sometimes a very low facade to be able to do stuff with, and it's not as inviting because it looks closed off and stuffy, so. Commissioner Greby?
Well, I, I think that, you know, security becomes a big discussion point. And so I think we're going to have to have something in there where it can, we can look at it. So whether we do sixty percent or fifty percent, I genuinely don't care. I think that the important aspect is the ability for us to have flexibility within that zone.
Commissioner Matthews?
Of the topics, this, in my opinion, is the least important. I support fifty percent instead of sixty percent.
Similarly to Commissioner, Commissioner Matthews, I'm not sure we need to take an action on this right now. I think there's different developers, security, businesses are changing, it's a different era than it was in 2020, 2019 than what it is today. So I'm not sure if this is an issue and if we need to put parameters around it. So I recommend, at this point, not doing anything.
I think there should be a minimum, whether it's fifty or sixty, you know, it depends on the, it really depends on the, the specific building, on how, on how much they're going to have. I mean, if it's, I hate using brands, but say it's a Crate and Barrel where they may have a eighteen-foot ceiling, you know, frontage where they like to have that big spot, and you're sixty percent glass, then it might be too much. But if you've got a, a standard-sized building where, you know, it's a ten, it's a ten to twelve-foot space between floors, then fifty to sixty percent makes sense. So I, I think we want as much, I hate ambiguity, but you need a little bit more ambiguity depending on, on the specific, the specific use for what that bottom floor is really going to be, so that's.
Just one follow-up. We're talking about mixed use, so not a power center type thing where you, you would have different concerns about height. But in any event, I, I don't have strong feelings about fifty or sixty. I think lower is better, though.
So I've got one zero, one, doesn't care, couple fifties, couple sixties.
Let's go probably there fifty-five.
All right, so consensus of minimum of fifty percent of the first floor on these mixed-use projects, are we good with that?
That's good.
All right. So six, one, basically.
Okay. And did, and did you want flexibility to, I think you want flexibility.
Yeah, it depends.
Okay. I think, all right.
Because for some reason, if there's a fourteen or sixteen foot, you know, new businesses is coming along all the time with their, with a grand dose idea of how, how they may want a specific.
Sure. Okay. So we can, we can add in that language that gives you the authority to reduce that on a case-by-case basis. The good thing, though, is it makes, based on the direction we've gotten, it makes it very easy, particularly if we have a project that qualifies under SB 330, where we've got set standards to know, does it comply or not, but they still have a pathway with some of this flexibility to, to achieve a good project.
I think all of us desire the ability to have a great project, so that's, I think that's what it comes down to, is having that flexibility for a great project, so.
We appreciate the commission's feedback on, on these topics.
And I'm sure I'm speaking for everybody here. You did a great job tonight. You were so, such a computer there, going specific sites and, and examples, and very impressive, Jonathan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Did we decide on, on the office commercial, it says thirty percent, so how, can we go up? I think we missed that part.
Yeah, we didn't cover that. The dwelling for a single-family detached. So, so do we not want single-family in those parcels? Would that be kind of go over right now?
Yeah, so I think Commissioner Paul was asking about the other part that we actually didn't address, which is the office commercial. But if you want to, if you want the commission to discuss single-family, you know, we could.
Why don't we, why don't we go to Commissioner Paul first, then we'll go on to the next one. Sorry.
Okay. My question is, I think we discussed everything, but we did miss that part, the thirty percent for the office commercial district, so. So I think we steamline everything. It should be like fifty percent on that, too.
Just to be clear, are you mentioning that you, you're okay with thirty percent for office commercial, or do you think it should be lower than, or higher than thirty percent?
It should be higher than that. I said, let's streamline everything. Like if you said fifty percent on, on the other, it should be fifty percent as well.
Thank you for transparencies.
And an example of this would be the area across the street from Costco, all those office buildings over there?
Yes, and also, interestingly enough, Sunrise is office commercial. What does the commission think about?
Yeah. Concerns thirty, fifty, twenty-nine.
What do you think it is now, the trend over there, because those?
It's at least fifty percent.
It's got it, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a, you walk past those buildings, I mean, they're set back a little bit from the street, that parking in between the street.
I'm thinking the ones over by Costco.
Oh, by Costco. Oof.
Now, which, are you talking where Solano County Office of Education is, or at Sticky Rice, or you like behind Costco where the New Granite Expo is? Because that's actually highway commercial.
I think I'm referring to where the Salon, the education.
I think Granite, Granite Expo, I think is highway's commercial, HC, right?
It's actually, it was rezoned office commercial some years ago.
Okay. And that's, that's at least fifty percent also.
I think, I'd be, I mean, I'm estimating here, since I don't have like plans in front of me, but it's probably about fifty percent. I mean, those are, actually, I think, I think Dave was pulling up Street View.
Yeah, it's probably forty, forty to fifty percent, and I can certainly pass this down if you want. You have the windows, but you also have breaks between the windows, so that exhibit that we showed earlier really only had one small, you know, one break between where the arrow was, and you had sixty. This one's probably forty to fifty would be my guess.
But then, is that the site, or is that the park facing Business Center?
That's facing Business Center. That's the building along Business Center closer to Sticky Rice. And so, you know, for anybody watching at home, we're just looking at a, an image of the office building in front of, in front of the library in Cordelia. I think it's either that one or the one next to it, but yeah.
That's why I dropped my votes off. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So Commissioner Matthews?
I'm in favor of leaving thirty percent.
Okay.
I'm also in favor of leaving thirty percent. It seems even with the thirty percent, there's higher percentage of transparencies. I don't want to make it any more difficult for developers. I, I'm fine with just the, the thirty.
And we're good with a minimum of thirty percent?
Okay.
Minimum thirty. All right. Okay. Now, now we can go on to these Fairfield Municipal Codes about single-family detached houses in some of these office commercial, neighborhood commercial, thoroughfare commercial, and mix, which I guess we're finding out is really just a handful of parcels. So do we have any suggestions in this regard on allowing single-family in these things, or?
No.
Thank you. Are we all, all in agreement on that?
I second that.
Clear direction there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any further questions or anything for staff before we go on to information and communications aspect? Commissioner Paul?
Dave, when we talk about mixed use, so we are always mentioning bringing residents in the commercial zone, right? It's not the vice versa. We can't bring commercial in the residential zone.
That's, that's correct. The only semblance of commercial is if you have a home office, but that's not really commercial.
Right.
Yeah, we, we do have.
It's not the vice versa. Mixed use is always, I just want to clarify to myself.
Yeah, it's always residential proposed in the commercial zone.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have provisions for some non-residential development in our residential zones, you know, like churches. We do allow small office buildings, but there's, there's already restrictions in the code. Has to be on a, has to be on at least an arterial or a collector, sort of the next level down kind of road. Can't be more than three acres, so it does require to be a, a, a very small amount. You could have a gym, things like that. So there's some very limited allowances for commercial, standalone commercial buildings in, in residential, but for the most part, everything we're talking tonight is simply allowing residential and commercial zones.
My question was, if somebody comes later, you do allow residents in the commercial zone, why don't you have commercial zone in the residential? That's the reason I asked you.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks, everybody. Got through this. Directors report, commissioners report. Mr. Feinstein, do you have any?
Yeah, a couple items. I wanted to follow up on a comment that was made by a member of the public at the last meeting, suggesting that the city has put off any construction of the fire station that's being planned on Business Center Drive. So got some details, some clarity and confirmation that I did want to pass back to you. There is no, we're not delaying construction of the fire station, so the design is complete, and we're looking to put that out to bid this year with construction starting somewhere after the rainy season ends next year. And so it's actually not just one fire station, it's two stations. So there's the new fire station along Business Center Drive, and then another station on Peabody Road over, if you know where Vandon High School is, somewhere over in the general vicinity of Vandon, the Clorox, the Clorox factory, that area. So we are building a new fire station over in that area. They're essentially the same design. We've designed these two stations to be very similar, so we're going to bid them together so that, because you've got some commonality in the construction of each one. So that project's moving forward full steam ahead with construction looking to start next year, so. So we have that, and then we don't have anything scheduled for your next meeting. We will adjourn to that meeting just in case something comes up, but at the moment, nothing's tracking for that meeting. But we, we do have items for your second meeting in September, including coming back. We think we'll come back with the proposed regulations that we talked about tonight, as well as some other proposed changes, just a collection of small random things throughout the zoning ordinance as a part of our annual review of the zoning ordinance. So second meeting in September, we expect to come back with those changes.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, one final thing I should mention, there's a ribbon cutting tomorrow. Oh, go ahead, if you, yeah, we'll, we'll let you, we'll let you mention that one.
Yeah, tomorrow, the EV, hopefully, everybody can make it eleven AM at, exciting to have first electric bus rolling out, so.
Over at the Fairfield Transportation Center, yeah. We're excited to be.
Is that on Gregbury?
It's on Cadenaso, right across from Target, yeah. So we're super excited to kick off electric, electric buses, and so this will be the ribbon cutting for that project.
Okay, commissioners, we'll start with Commissioner Singh.
Yes, thank you. So, so I think that many of us have probably tried the drink called Ojata. It is a Mexican drink, and for me, it is easily a top-three drink. Now, when I went to the Tomato and Vine Festival, I found variations of this drink, and I got to try the strawberry Ojata drink, and it is easily a top-two drink for me, and not number two, it is number one. And I would have never found it had I not gone to the Tomato and Vine Festival, and I just think that, I want to thank staff and Parks and Rec because they were able to put that, they were able to put that event on and help me find my new favorite drink, which I've only been able to find at that festival. They don't sell it anywhere else, so that's my report.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Reese? Thank you. Commissioner Paul? Greby?
Thank you to everyone. I thought this was a very productive evening.
Commissioner Matthews?
Thank you.
Commissioner Ruben?
Just one quick note. I noticed today on the public website for the city of Fairfield, on the Minutes folder for 2024 is completely empty. Everything else was there.
Okay, we'll take a look and we'll get those loaded up.
And I concur.
Changes to.
That layout.
So what we are looking to do is, so if you're familiar with our city council packet, there's a sort of an automated system that puts it all together and sort of structures it very formally, rather than just getting a single PDF like you do for your packets. So we are, we're actually switching the provider for our city council report packets. At the same time, we're going to be merging in the planning commission into that, and so we'll have a new system for delivering your packets and the way, you know, there'll be, there'll be individual links for each of the attachments, things like that. That's in the works. I'm not sure exactly when that, that'll happen, but I'll see if I can get an update on that.
Yeah, I had actually made that complaint myself, so I, I got that same response from the city manager. And, and with that integration of this new system, there'll be different ways that we'll vote. Instead of doing eyes, we'll be pressing, pressing a green or red button type thing, so we're going to get to the 21st century, so.
One more. I wasn't finished. I also wanted to, as Commissioner Greby said, I thought this was a really great discussion, and so kudos to my fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It was, truly what it was, was a study session, so it was, it was great. So thank you, everybody, and I will take Commissioner Singh's word about the strawberry Ojata. But the Tomato and Vine Festival's really good. It was great seeing everybody down there. I went on Saturday, and I guess the greatest thing about the whole thing was people were complaining that, that they sold out of tomatoes both days, so that was, that's a good thing that when you're, when it was that successful, and it wasn't overly hot, it wasn't, you know, it was just, it was warm, so it was great. So with that, we will have, go ahead and adjourn to the next meeting on August, or September, the 11th, 2024? Yeah. We'll call it the 11th of September instead of, all right. All right, thank you. Good night, everybody.